Welcome to San Clemente's Video Library. I'm Joanne Bade, City Clerk of the City of San Clemente. To skip this introduction, click on Skip Intro. This video will play on most Internet connections. To fast-forward or to advance to a particular agenda item may require additional loading time. To access a particular portion of the meeting, please click on one of the links on the right side of this screen. The Show Help link below explains various features that are available with this site. If you have questions or encounter difficulties, please call my office at 361-8200. Thank you.
...
Yes, I have a change. Page seven, fourteen, page twelve. It says Commissioner Ecclestone, College of Oldham. Although the city has a legal, ethical, and moral obligation to care for its homeless, poor, homeless communities, we made the compromises the city's mission statement. What was left out is states that our number one priority is the health and safety of this community, which is my guiding principle. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
I had a change on page seven. At the bottom, there is a paragraph that is attributable to everything that Deputy Bowles said to our questions. However, my question and his response to my question was left out. So, I would like my question to actually be in the record with his response. But my question tonight, if, to read it, I'm responding for what someone else said. I'm asking for his response to be in there. I have verbatim what he said. So, should I just read exactly what he said? Okay. Okay. Well, you're using it in different tones here. Just, I think I was the last one to question Deputy Bowles. So, after that paragraph, I would add that Commissioner Ward asked Deputy Bowles if he encountered people that were homeless that he deemed to be new to our town, that told him that they were here because of I-Hope services. Did he ever encounter that? His answer was yes. When I-Hope came to town, we did see an influx. I don't have those hard numbers, but in polling my fellow deputies and being approached by them, they told me that there is a new one in town. Here's his name, date of birth, and he states he was from another location outside the city, and he got word of I-Hope, and he wanted to utilize those services that they offered. He also said he came in contact personally with people who came to our city specifically because they heard of I-Hope and were also utilizing their address to receive mail. So, I can give you a copy of that, but I'd like my question and his answer in there. Thank you.
Michael?
Page twelve. Under Commission Discussion Regarding Strategy Determination, the first paragraph, line eight, it says that if property is donated for the use, the engineering issues, let's see if it's property. What I need to have is just purchase put before cost in that line. So, it's cite purchase costs. Did you get that, Ellen?
Do you see that?
Okay.
Okay. And then, I had a small change as well on page fourteen. It's about three-quarters of the way down, the paragraph that begins Chair Darden, the line that begins with idea. And it said, "If the majority of the commission feels it is a good idea to bring this idea to council for further discussion and public input." Okay. All right. If there are no further changes, do we have a motion?
I'll move you approve.
Commissioner Ecclestone? And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes seven-zero. And we'll move on to oral and written communication. We have no written communication. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Seeing no one stepping forward, we'll move on to the public hearing process. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item on our agenda for the public hearings is Item A, 415 Avenida Granada, Minor Cultural Heritage Permit, 14-114, Courtyard Lawn Replacement at the Casa Romanica. Mr. Champ?
Hello, everyone. That application has been withdrawn by the applicant. They have decided to no longer pursue the artificial turf installation on the Casa Romanica courtyard and have installed new sods. So, that's the update for you.
That's good to hear. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, then, Item Two on our agenda.
I'm sorry. Just a quick question about that. I know that we had continued that.
For a negative resolution.
Right.
Okay. So, Item B, 2401.5, Avenida del Presidente, Amendment to Conditional Use Permit, 94-028, AT&amp;T Right-of-Way. And Mr. Champ back in, please.
Good evening, again, Planning Commissioners. So, this is the AT&amp;T Right-of-Way project. It's actually an amendment to a project that was, a cellular project that was approved in 1994. The mouse. I don't think so. So, the site location, thank you, Jim, is located near the Calafia exit. It's adjacent to the I-5 freeway and residential medium and residential low zoning designations. It's actually located in the city right-of-way. Next slide, please. Just to give you a little background, as I said, the project was approved for AT&amp;T in 1994, which included the antennas and four mechanical boxes. The facility is not providing the necessary coverage for broadband data and voice services for the AT&amp;T customers in the area, and so, it is proposed to be upgraded with this amendment before you today. This is the existing facility here. So, as you can see, there are two antennas that are attached and hanging off of the utility pole, and then, the four mechanical boxes that are adjacent to the utility pole. So, this is an up-close view of the antennas, and as you can see, they're very cluttered design that's there and would not be consistent with our current visual standards that we have for our cellular facilities. Next slide. So, the project before you is to upgrade the antennas to an LTE, high-speed antenna, which will increase the voice and data capabilities. Those antennas are actually two feet taller than the existing antennas, just for increasing that capacity and service. It will also install new mechanical equipment in two of the mechanical boxes. So, the boxes will actually remain, and just the equipment within the box will change. So, this is the proposed design. The antennas would no longer be offset from the utility pole and would be directly mounted to the pole. They would also be flush or painted to match the pole design, whereas now, they're kind of like a off-white color. And then, there would be no aesthetic changes to the utility cabinets. As part of the design, the applicant is also proposing painting the conduit along the side of the utility pole, just to improve the stealth design of the overall facility. And this design is consistent with the light standards design that is identified in the wireless master plan. This is the current coverage. So, the blue is bad, green is good. So, as you can see in this area, they're not getting very much coverage at all. This is one of the areas that's in need of improved service. And so, if we go to the next slide, we can see that with this proposed site, it'll dramatically improve the overall service, just with an upgrade of just two antenna. So, staff is recommending approval for the project for the following reasons. The additional height of the antenna is negligible and not anticipated to have any visual impacts to the site. The design improves the aesthetics of the facility in that there's less antenna exposure. The flush-mounted design of the antennas on the utility pole is consistent with the wireless master plan designs, and also improves the stealth design of the site, and it improves the LTE service and signal in the area. So, that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have.
Jim?
My recollection of the other, of the new antennas that we have approved in the recent past, we usually have some, it's like a small utility building that's got at least some kind of architectural treatment to it, as opposed to the bare boxes. Is that, I know this was approved about twenty years ago. I take it that at that time, we didn't do that as a standard? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
And the applicant can respond to this, but this is actually kind of a temporary facility for them. It's even with what they're proposing, doesn't provide them the necessary coverage that they're looking for, for their customers. So, in about two years' time, they'll be coming forward with a new application for a facility that will be likely more stealth than this and in another location. So, it'll have much better screening. I believe this contract is to expire in 2017. So, they will be relocating the site elsewhere.
Kathy, did you have a question?
So, that answered one of my questions. So, 2017, this will not be here at all. Their contract will expire. They will have to move it.
I don't know if there's potential for us to extend it at all, but I do know that our current contract is through 2017. So, that would be up to the city and AT&amp;T to determine if we were willing to extend it and for what time period that would be.
Did you not look at the mechanical boxes to try to stealth those because you consider it a temporary site? Was there any discussion on that?
There's limited right-of-way here. So, basically, what we would have is a box around boxes. So, I mean, there's not much that can be done in this space. There is some landscaping that we're requesting them to be maintained, where it's a little bit overgrown and a little cumbersome along the right-of-way there. So, that was kind of the, this, what was discussed, but there was no new enclosures or screening that was proposed for the mechanical equipment.
Okay.
Michael, then, Bart?
On the landscaping, again. I know that a design review, I was around when they approved this original one. I didn't think it was 95, because I think there was maybe an additional approval sometime after 2000. But I remember at the time that we requested they put some planting in, and it's kind of surprising this plant material has survived because there was no way to get irrigation. I'm a little concerned with condition number eight. Do you know whether the, it talks about if they're to supply new plant material, that it needs to be drought tolerant and all. But given the fact there's no ability to get water there, do you know whether the applicant's planning on doing any additional landscape? Because if they are, I think we run the risk of losing what we have.
In speaking with the applicant, and also, in my understanding of the design review discussion, it was that either kind of maintain what's there, or if you are going to propose something new, you know, looking into, for some of our other facilities, we've used gel packs and different things to establish the plant materials. So, I think the applicant's looking to just move forward with just the maintenance of this landscaping that's there.
Just, I know we were very concerned about the look of those, and in the discussions and the applicant agreed to paint the boxes. I don't find that in the conditions of approval. And that should be included in the conditions of approval.
Okay. We can add that in there.
Agreed.
Was that something that was discussed at the design review?
I think what was said at design review is that the color that was chosen for it is good. It's just that over time, it's faded, and so, a dark green like they chose originally would be fine, but it just needs to be kind of refreshed.
We probably add that language to condition ten.
Antenna conduit and boxes, utility boxes. Okay. Any other questions, John, or shall we hear from the applicant?
Can I just ask him one last question?
Sure.
What would be wrong with a box around those boxes? Why wouldn't staff consider that an enclosure?
There was no, there was no discussion of a box within a box in the review of the application.
All right.
Okay. Now, would your applicant like to come forward?
Sure.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michael Mitchell. I'm with AT&amp;T. And we're here today, obviously, we've had some serious issues with the coverage and capacity for this particular site. Just to give you a little background, and the reason why we're even here today is the site basically currently is running with no LTE coverage whatsoever. So, when they put up the map showing the coverage, that's simply a before and after. There's absolutely no LTE coverage. So, data speed, dropped calls, just a number of issues are created from having the lack of the LTE technology. The site has a lot of limitations. Space is number one. There's just not a lot of space in this facility. So, we had to get very creative with the design that we came up for this. What we have to do is harvest these existing boxes, just to put the radio equipment that will perform the LTE technology in this area. So, the benefits, obviously, is everybody in this general area is going to have much improved coverage, faster data, access to video, access to much quicker wireless services, and far fewer dropped calls for this area, not only the surrounding community, but the highway traffic in between. There's a substantial amount of dropped calls, just from people that are going from their LTE, drops into GSM and UMTS coverage, and then regains it when they get further down on the freeway. As John was saying, this is a temporary solution, because ultimately, our goal is to provide a much better network coverage for everything in the San Clemente region down here. But unfortunately, we've got to work with the limitations we have, which is try to put the LTE equipment into this facility, try to make it cosmetically more sound than what it is now, which is, and from the design view, I see a number of you are sitting in that meeting, and we did discuss, and definitely, we're going to paint the infrastructure pole, antennas, and the equipment surrounding it. Everything is going to be freshened up. The landscaping around is all going to be cleaned up. That was definitely part of the plan there, when we make this, we'll make this improvement. And with regard to the space limitations here and putting a box around a box, there's a couple factors there. One, realistically, there's no room to even put any additional infrastructure in there and not impede into the right-of-way or into the street. Secondarily, even if you could, put it right next to the box. We have some issues with heat, dissipation, and access. We have to be able to, the technicians have to be able to get to the equipment. Not only that, it has to have free-flowing air, or the equipment will overheat and shut down. So, literally, it's not feasible to cram, I don't think, anything in there. We would look at, we would look at doing, entertaining something like that. I'm just not sure that the site lends itself to the physical capabilities that would require building that type of infrastructure. And to John's point, this is temporary, 2017. The expectation is this site will come off air from this location and be moved into an alternative location. The site is already with our reload team, our relocation team. We've already targeted another site. We will likely not begin in pursuing the site on another property until early next year. We'll release the site acquisition team to go out and start working with not only the building owner at the hotel, but also with the city to come up with a plan. And obviously, with all the new regulations and the ordinances to make sure that we're consistent, there would be probably most likely a rooftop facility with facades built around the antenna, completely enclosed, and all the equipment would be hidden from view. So, that's the plan for the long term, and that's the direction that we're definitely going. And that's been the expectation from the beginning, that this is a temporary solution to help our immediate needs, which is get LTE going here, support our network, and support our customer base here. We get a lot of complaints. Obviously, this is what we call a T-Nole site. It's an offender site, meaning we can't perform based on the license that we procured for this area, because we don't, we're not broadcasting LTE, and we need to get it going. So, this is the best solution we can come up for the time being, until we further relocate, and at that time, obviously, I believe the network's going to be very, very sound at that point.
Mr. Mitchell, we have a question from Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
What hotel? Did you speak up?
There's a couple that they set up, which team is targeting, and unfortunately, I don't know exactly which one is the primary at this point. It's that one right there. Yes, that's one of them right there.
That's the one that directly is impacted by the vision of your four mechanical boxes.
I'm not sure if you see it from that side across the freeway there, but I know that on that side, it's basically the off-ramp.
The other question I had is, this coverage, it didn't seem to take in from this south location to the beach, and I happen to know that's a bad area.
Oh, it definitely will improve, but you have to remember, the density in which it, you can only broadcast so much power out of an individual site. So, the coverage that you'll get from one particular site is generally somewhere between an eighth of a mile and a quarter of a mile with the tight broadband capabilities. So, yes, you will get improvement down in the beach, for sure, but you also have a lot of terrain between here and there, and building infrastructure that will come into play. But the main, the main objective for here is to improve the immediate residential area businesses and the freeway.
Commissioner Ward?
Yeah. I think based on your antenna orientation, you're trying to cover the freeway.
Yeah. That's our main objective, yes.
Because of where you're fixing your antennas on the pole. You have a two-antenna array.
Yeah. We have to do the best we can with the antenna configuration we have now. It is a wideband, and it does, it will give you radio coverage, but the main goal is to make sure that we can cover that highway.
Satisfy the community. You'd want to put two more antennas up there with a different night.
Hey, we'd be happy to throw four or five more up there if you guys would let us, trust me.
That's what would allow Commissioner Ward to be able to use your phone.
My phone does not work in my house all the time. I actually thought it was broken.
Oh, really? Well, I can tell you one thing. If you're in this general area, you're not getting any LTE coverage, which, when that turns on, you're going to see night and day difference and the capabilities of your phone alone.
However, I continue to be in the blue area on that map. All right. Any other question? Or, Jim?
I had a quick question.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Okay. We, over the last couple of years, have approved some permits for third-party bandwidth providers that supposedly can take care of multiple cellular carriers. And I'm curious as to if that's part of your plan at all in San Clemente?
No. This is strictly for AT&amp;T's wireless community only. We, on this particular site, would not, we would not be utilizing it for sublinating to any third-party wireless or broadband companies. This is strictly for AT&amp;T's network alone, and only for their mobility network, not for U-verse or any of the other services that we provide.
Okay. And do you look at that like for the future, that you might make advantage of those sorts of locations?
Well, in the future, for this particular area, I can't, I can't really speak to what the overall goal is, other than to improve AT&amp;T's mobile network and data services in this general area. So, anything outside of that, I really can't speak to.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm trying to figure out here on the LTE coverage, what, how far that extends. There's no street delineation there. I'm just trying to...
As I was describing, typically, the benefit that you'd get is anywhere from an eighth of a mile to a half a mile, but that's also based on a number of different issues. Terrain, elevation, additional infrastructure from buildings, trees, a number of things factor in. So, there's no definitive distance. All we can say is that it's going to improve the general overall coverage and capacity and capabilities for an area of roughly around a quarter of a mile radius to a half a mile radius.
That's Riviera?
Yeah. It seems like right around Ramona, it starts to turn yellow, I think.
That's the coastline there.
You guys know the streets pretty good. You can tell from that.
We travel the streets a lot.
Are you going to ask more questions?
It would, it'd be great to have a drone up there with an antenna.
You know, it's funny to say that, in Europe, there's some testing going on with drones that can perform just what you're saying, but what they found out, that a number of people, the biggest worry is that if somebody was able to license drones through the FAA and be able to, like, Amazon, for example, wants to make deliveries. This is something they've been talking about. They're working with FAA right now. And if you think about it, yeah, it's a great idea. They can, you know, you can deliver stuff. You've got drones everywhere. The problem is, is that they've proven that hackers will go and be able to develop a software where they can pull the drone over a certain area and not with certain programs. They can trick your phone in to think it's connecting to a Wi-Fi network, pull all your information out your phone. And so, you're a long way out for that technology.
Kathy, do you have one more?
The new site that you're talking about, maybe getting on the rooftop, that's not going to improve the coverage in all the areas where it's poor?
Yep. It's going to be substantially better than what we can provide from here, because you have a number of things. You've got elevation that you're talking about. It's going to be increased at that point. Your, the number of antennas and the size of the antennas are going to be better. So, you add all that into the number of radios you can add to that, the larger antennas, the additional antennas, it's just, it's just a numbers thing. The more you can get, the larger you can get, the better the coverage and the wider the area that we can cover, and a number of factors. An elevation's one. As you know where this is, the antennas are located at about thirty-five feet or so. And when we go to the adjacent building, we're going to get an increase in that elevation, and just being able to increase the number of antennas, it's really going to help substantially.
Is, where other, what other facilities do you have? Because I see some blue in here on some streets. Do you have other, other facilities which service this area here also?
Well, the, if, the next adjacent site, which is a handoff site for this one, you may be familiar with it, is, there's a St. Andrews Church, just, I think it's just north, I think, of the area, up on the hillside. The St. Andrews Church has a number of wireless facilities out there. That's, yes. We have, our equipment's actually on the roof of that building, in the soffits, but everybody's out there, sprints on the cross, and that is our handoff site. And that has much broader coverage area than we're broadcasting from this particular location. But this is definitely going to help us connect to that site. It's going to give us, we put LTE on that site last year, and about, yeah, actually, we integrated about seven, six, seven months ago. They finally got LTE there. So, this is going to be the next logical handoff point.
So, St. Andrews site would have a different coverage and would have...
Right now, they have full LTE, and the fourth, the fast LTE network is already up and running.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no more questions for the applicant, we'll open the public hearing and invite anybody who wishes to speak on this issue to come forward. Seeing no one coming forward and seeing no cards, we'll close the public hearing and invite discussion or a motion.
If we don't have discussion, I'd make a motion. Okay.
Okay, I move that we adopt Resolution Number PC 14-015, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving an amendment to conditional use permit, AMCUP 94-028, allowing the installation of new antennas and equipment for an existing AT&amp;T cellular site at 2401 and 1/2 Avenue de del Presidente, with a change to Condition Number 10, to also read that the utility boxes will be repainted to match the existing green color.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes 7-0. And Mr. Mitchell, those of us in the blue area eagerly await the site and the hotel.
I've got a couple of sites we're going to be down here next year talking to you about.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to Item C, Cultural Heritage Permit 14-034, Rizal addition, a request to consider a 409 square foot addition to a commercial building located at 122 Avenue de Cabrillo.
Chair Darden, I was going to recuse on this item because I own property within 500 feet.
Okay, thank you, Michael. And you're not, Mr. Jones?
I am actually, not only am I Mr. Jones, but I'm also, I was Mr. Hook earlier tonight, because they're both at an awards ceremony with the American Planning Association to hopefully receive an award for a bicycle pedestrian master plan.
I believe it was strongly recommended that they attend the ceremony.
So, here I am, I'll do my best. So this is a request to do in addition to an existing facility or building in the downtown. This is the project area, as you can see, on Cabrillo, and across the street, right here is a historical structure, so that's part of the evaluation. It's also, you know, a request to evaluate the design of the expansion to this medical It's a one-story building, and medical is permitted use in the downtown, and because it's not in the downtown core, it's allowed to be on the lower floors of the buildings. Had it been on, had it been on Del Mar, it would have to be on an upper floor. A cultural heritage permit is required for the architectural changes to the building. It's a 400 square foot addition, which will make the building about 1,700 square feet. There are nine space, parking spaces required and provided on the adjacent lot to the building. Just a little bit about the site plan, you can see right here, there's an exist, right now, this is an existing carport, and that would be where a big part of the expansion would occur, right in here. There's going to be elimination of three kind of informal, non-conforming in terms of regulation parking spaces out front. Whoops. But that allows us to create a closed curb cut right here, and create two new public parking spaces in front, which will be more beneficial for the downtown overall. Little information about the parking lot, this is a nine-space parking lot, it's been leased by the city in the past for public parking, the applicant voluntarily, when the new, the applicant now is a new owner. When the new owner purchased the building, the lease agreement falls off because it was with the previous owner. My understanding is the owner has left this open for public use during this time, and intends to also do a lease agreement with the city later on. Anyway, and also, they're going to take this area that is no longer concrete and create landscape areas here, they're creating a path of travel from the ADA space to the facility, and they're also creating a path of travel off the street. And this landscape design, which will come in as a condition of approval, is going to be pedestrian oriented, and I think they're going to have some seating out here for their employees as kind of an outdoor, indoor, outdoor, or, what do you call these, outdoor room type space? Okay, and this is a picture of the revised front elevation, as you see, the carport area is filled in. They'll put a new window in here, there's an existing beam that'll be widened a bit to look a little bit more Spanish in style. The front door will be oriented toward the street rather than the side where it is now. The addition of two windows and a wrought iron decorative item here. Then the whole building will be stuccoed, a smooth white stucco finish. Understanding that this isn't going to be looking Spanish in terms of design, because of just the general design of the building doesn't facilitate that very easily, but it'll be bring, be brought closer to the goals of the downtown district in terms of fitting in with the Spanish Colonial Revival District design.
Jim, I had a question. I noticed we did get detail on the decorative wrought iron, but we didn't have detail on what the wrought iron light fixtures would look like. Is that something where staff could make sure to approve those? If it is, because I didn't.
I think we have.
But it doesn't have, it just, but it doesn't say for approval by staff. If staff can just give some guidance on that, I think that would be helpful, because, oh, good.
So that was the concept they submitted.
Okay, and that's wrought iron, that's not the, okay.
Well, I don't know. That's what Cliff gave me.
I can't read small type that fast.
So you know what I'm going to say about this, right? Is this fully shielded? It doesn't look, it doesn't look like it. And we've been moving towards that with other, other commercial buildings. It's not, I'm sure they certainly get the same fixture fully shielded.
Certainly, we can work with the applicant to meet the dark skies requirement, and also if they desire us for it to be a wrought iron fixture, that we can work with them to ensure that that's the case.
Well, and Bart's just pointed out to me the way that the condition of approval is worded, that staff is going to be reviewing it, so.
So our analysis, the project meets the findings for a cultural heritage permit because of the architectural treatment brings it closer to the goals of the district, and there's enhanced visual improvements with the building design and the landscaping, and I think some benefits with the closure of the curb cut and creating the sidewalk in front and the public parking spaces. So based on that, staff is recommending approval of the project, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, is the actual area where the former, the former parking spots are going to be removed, is there going to be some plants and stuff like that put in there, or what's the treatment, other than this? Yeah.
These will be both landscaped.
Landscaped?
That's where you were talking about the exterior living space kind of feel?
Let me get this one, this side here, the plan was to provide some.
Yeah, there was no landscape plan provided, so there's a little more detail of that.
They're both planer beds, and.
Could you step up to the microphone?
Corey Ritzow, I'm the applicant. Both of the graded areas are planer beds with seating area provided. More in this area, it's like a shaded space outside of our front door.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim, or perhaps we can ask the applicant to come up and address any other questions we might have? If you'd step forward, Porres. Thank you.
Corey Ritzow, the owner and the applicant.
Is there anything you wish to say, or are you?
I think Jim did a, did a good job. The expansion will allow us to add some new operatories and additional dental chairs to our office, and I, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay, no, thank you very much. Okay, so let's open the public hearing, and anyone who wishes to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing no one stepping forward, we'll close the public hearing and invite discussion or motion. Commissioner Brown, and then Commissioner Ward.
No, I think it's a very nice little addition to the area, particularly the removal of that front facade, and so if there's any other discussion, all entertain a motion.
Just for Jim's benefit, Condition Approval 9 takes care of all the dark skies lighting issues. The only thing I don't see in here is, does, Jim, does the landscape need to be approved by planning department? I didn't see.
Landscape plan.
The landscape plan would be approved by our landscape consultant.
Should that be a condition of approval?
Might be a good idea. Let me see if we have something, usually we have a standard on that.
Here, let me, let me help you with that. We originally had a landscape design that was provided. We were attempting to create an ADA parking space in this area, but the logistics didn't work out with engineering and building, so we've since moved the ADA parking spot over there. So we had an original landscape plan that was approved on the right-hand side, but we've had to re-drop those plans, and they're currently being submitted, but they haven't yet been approved, but they're going to be submitted later this week.
Okay, thank you. It's helpful since Mr. Jones isn't, isn't here.
Is that covered? Do you want to still add addition?
What I do is I. Number 10, looks like it's a landscape condition. Am I on the right one?
Yes, I think that, no, that's public.
This is detailed landscape plan and incorporating drive along plans.
Yeah, great, it's there.
10 is there.
Okay. All right, good. All right, so.
Let me. I move we approve Resolution Number PC 14-013, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approval, approving cultural heritage permit 14-034, Rizou addition, a request to consider a 409 square foot addition to the commercial building located at 122 Avenue de Cabrillo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes 6-0. Congratulations, Dr. Rizou.
My wife is the doctor.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Well, I thought it was, and then when you stepped up, and I thought, I thought this was a woman.
Much better than I am. I just work for her.
Can I just mention that I think she is Larry Moore's daughter?
She is.
She's Larry Moore's daughter. So I just wanted to, there's a connection.
I married into a family that has roots that run deep here in the city.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Next. And here's Commissioner Calp returning to us. And next on the agenda is Item 8D, General Plan Consistency Finding. Mr. Tamian.
I don't, I don't. Thank you, Chair Darden. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Adam Tamian, Assistant Planner, tonight, I'm presenting the General Plan Consistency Finding for the Fiscal Year 2014-2015 Capital Improvement Program with the General Plan. The Capital Improvement Program identifies the proposed major projects for the next fiscal year. These are projects that are, they're construction projects, purchases of land, equipment, and contract services that are in excess of $25,000. Every year, the Planning Commission is charged with a review of these projects to make sure that they comply with the general plan. These projects are then forwarded on to the City Council for approval in the budget process. The commission's finding that a proposed CIP item conforms to the general plan does not necessarily mean that the city endorses the project or plan in a particular form. This is more of a review of the intent of the project and its consistency with the general plan. The Planning Commission reviewed these projects in a study session held on April 16th of this year. At that meeting, there were some questions, and there's an attachment that lists the answer for some of those questions. If that document does not answer the questions sufficiently, or there are some other ones that are, that have come up since then, I would be more than happy to address those. In its present form, staff is confident that these, the CIP is consistent with the general plan. Staff is available for any questions, and additionally, Ken Nats, the CIP Coordinator for the Engineering Division, is here as well.
Are there any questions for Adam?
Actually, just a comment, I wanted to thank you for your prompt response to my late question today. It was very detailed and very useful. Thank you.
I just comment, Adam, because I think it's the third year you've done this, and you're really getting good at it. And with your, your probably worst counterpart there in the back, I mean, and this is a transition year with the new general plan.
Absolutely.
I think the hours that we spent with you in April was well-spent, and it's just very well-done for tonight.
Any other questions? Okay, well, since the city's the applicant, we don't need to invite the applicant up, but we will open the public hearing, see if anybody wants to address this issue. Seeing no one step forward, we'll close the public hearing, invite discussion or motion.
Just a quick comment, I had had a question for Adam today, because I, the response we got, the original response we got from the IT department didn't really kind of fill the bill for me in terms of how consistent this was with the general plan, in terms of where we're looking at best practices for disaster recovery and off-site storage and that sort of thing. But we got a lot of information back from Adam and from the IT department, and I'm pretty happy now that what they're doing is consistent with the general plan in terms of best practices and what he's meant and that sort of thing, so.
I had had the same concerns, and I was pleased by the response that he provided, so I no longer have those concerns myself. So.
Want to make a motion, or do we have more discussion, or do we want to, since we've already spent hours on this?
I don't see any other lights coming on, so it sounds like.
I move we approve Resolution Number PC 14-014, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, finding the Fiscal Year 2014 and 2015 Capital Improvement Program consistent with the San Clemente General Plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes 7-0. Thank you, Adam. All right, next item on our agenda, 8E, is Amendment to Site Plan Permit 02-093, Carolon Architecture, a request to consider revised architecture for the last 17 lots of an 84-lot development in a Talega specific plan area known as Carolon.
And I need to recuse myself since, I need to recuse myself since I do work for Standard Superior Government.
Thank you, Bart. And Amber Gregg, welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Amber Gregg, Project Planner. I'm sorry, were you saying this does not work? Okay.
You can use the remote mouse service that we have.
Oh, yes, my Dana White over here. Yes. Okay, so the first item that we have is the Carolon Development. This is a project that's located in the Talega specific plan. Here you see the area in Talega in which it's located, and this is track 16336. Next, please. Here's a detail of the track itself, and the proposed modifications apply to the 17 remaining vacant lots in the development. All the lots are actually in the center of the development, makes it a little unique from what we've seen in the past. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background on this, the original design was approved in 2004 for the 84 lots. Fifty-four of the homes were constructed with the original approval. Then in 2009, with the economic downturn, the applicant put in a request to modify some of the architectural details on the building. Those minor modifications were approved by Designer Review Subcommittee, and 13 homes were constructed with those changes. So that leaves us with the remaining 17 lots. So how did we get to where we are today? The applicant submitted September of 2013. In October, they hosted a community meeting at the Talega Pool Clubhouse. About 30 residents showed up, and pretty much everybody was very excited to see that the lots were finally being developed, but on the other hand, they were not happy with the designs that were presented, and were really hoping that the homes would look more like the original Carolon product. So taking that into consideration, the applicant then went to Designer Review Subcommittee to get Designer Review Subcommittee's input as well, and in November of last year, that was reiterated by the committee that said, yes, it would be nice to have those architectural details that were so prominent in the Carolon original design to be incorporated into the proposed designs as well. So the applicant revised the plans, tried to address as much as they could, and then in January, held another community meeting to present those plans to the community again. to present those plans to the community again. Approximately 20 people showed up to that meeting, and again, it was heard that the plans still did not meet with what they were hoping that the developer would have done by incorporating the details. The applicant decided not to go forward to Designer Review Subcommittee at that point. They decided just to address the residents' concerns and make additional modifications before going to Designer Review Subcommittee again. And then this past March, with the revised plans, they went back to Designer Review. I want to note that staff also attended all the community meetings and to listen to input, as well as invited all the residents. We provided notifications to the residents of all the Designer Review Subcommittee meetings as well, so that way they would be informed of the process. Next. So these are the proposed elevations, and I apologize. They're going to say Plans 5, 6, and 7, and they should say 4, 5, and 6, so I apologize for that. The original elevations were Spanish Colonial, Tuscan, and Monterey, and the proposed architecture is Spanish, Tuscan, and Monterey. The architectural detail... Can you go back one page? I'm sorry. So some of the architectural details that were carried over are, in the Spanish, the same color palettes, tile details, the wrought iron railings, the pop-outs. It's kind of hard to see in the two-dimensional elevations, but there's a lot of movement from the first floor to the second floor with some pretty good setback on the second story. The applicant brought renderings that you'll see on the walls tonight to help to better show what those setbacks actually look like on the buildings. In this particular Tuscan one, the arched windows, inset arched window is a character-defining feature. It's an architectural feature that's very prominent in that type of Carillon. And then we have the Monterey style. And with the balconies and the different veneer treatments on there. Go to the next one. So the veneers pretty much match. I want to also point out that in the original submittals and in the second ones, there were no chimneys, and that was a big concern to the community because with building standards today, these developments didn't actually need chimneys. But in order to help make it feel more part of the community, they did add faux chimneys to the buildings, but they are purely decorative. So you can see those very strongly in this elevation.
So they're not functional?
No, they're not. They're just for sex.
How is Santa going to get in? I just said, I just... Don't worry about that.
He's magic, that one. And next one, please. And then this is the last of the elevations. The Monterey has a full, or I should say, on a portion of the elevation has a long balcony there with the front veneer. On the Tuscan elevation, or on all these actually, you see that there's a two-car garage. That's one of the features of the original Carillon that they did not have previously either. So the applicant added the two single-car garages on there. Next. One of the comments that we heard at the last Designer Review Subcommittee meeting was to add some kind of detail to the side elevations. Previously, it was just the windows, so the applicant added the corresponding shutters that went with those sides. This is just the side elevations of one side of Plan 4. So I just wanted to show that they had added some details on there as well. Here's the floor plans. The difference in the floor plans, the square footages are very comparable. They're pretty much in keeping with the previous square footages, but these plans are more open in design than the previous ones. The applicant has stated that they believe that the buyer is looking for more of an open floor plan as opposed to what the original Carillon was, and so that's why these floor plans are reflecting that. We have great rooms. Each one has a California room or a covered patio area. Each will come with a fireplace. And in here, you can also see on the first floor, and particularly on the second floor elevations, areas that are outlined but have nothing in there. That just shows the setback of the first floor that's down below. Next. So here's... This will be Floor Plan 5, actually. And then the last one. And that concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Amber, I know as you went along, you mentioned a number of things that had been altered since the first plans were submitted. But would you just summarize in somewhat the same way you did in your staff report, the major things that had changed from that first submittal in November in response to both staff comment and comment from the public?
Yes. Give me one second while I get there. I would say that... Thanks. I would say the most substantial change was on the Spanish elevation. The applicant actually had to change the entire roof plan in order to help make that fit. So that was a big change that had occurred. Additional changes were... I'm sorry, let me just get to the page.
I'm sorry.
No, no, don't apologize. You're fine. I just don't want to misspeak. So revising the roofs was a big challenge for them. Then adding chimneys to the buildings, that was another one. Changing the single, some of the two-car garages into two single-car garages. They revised the eve details. They expanded, they added the architectural features that are consistent with the Carillon products, so a lot of the insets, archways, balconies. And they made sure that the materials on the outside of the veneers matched what the existing Carillon original development was as well.
And so on the Monterey, they added full balconies on the front of that, correct?
Yes. On the Monterey, originally, they didn't actually have any balconies, if I remember correctly, and they went back and added balconies to two of the three.
Kathy, I see.
Amber, there was some discussion on the finish, that staff had concerns with the finish, and I don't see that that was changed anywhere. I'm looking for the outcome of that.
For the Spanish one? Yeah. So we asked that whatever finish that they use on the Spanish stucco be used on this one. I believe the applicant's aware of that, but we're more than happy to include it as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Jim?
There was some communication to the Planning Commission about a park and median, and building a park and maintaining a median. Do you know anything about any development agreement that there is in terms of creating or maintaining those with relationship to these lots?
I'm going to defer to the applicant on that to answer that.
Okay.
Don?
Well, yeah, I have a similar question, Jim, because there is sort of a site plan remaining improvements chart we got, which includes, I guess, landscaping of the open lot and some of the streetscapes. There's... And is that open space a part of the... Is it a park? Is it conditioned as far as the homeowners association? There's no plumbing. Will it be irrigation put in on to maintain the area? Because there's no irrigation there now. Those are some of the questions I have that maybe the applicant can flesh us out on and whether this park is part of the Talega Homeowners Association, the Korean subset, is all part of the CCNRs, et cetera, to be maintained?
Well, I'll let them go ahead and...
Questions I have.
Are there any other questions of Amber? Shall we have the applicant step forward? Looks like we're ready for the applicant, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Crystal Barkle, and I'm with Standard Pacific Homes. First of all, I'd like to thank you all tonight for taking the time. And I also would like to thank the members of the Designer Review Subcommittee for all of their guidance throughout the process and to Amber for all of her help as well. To answer some of your questions in regards to the landscaping, the park will be completed along with our first phase of construction. It is adjacent to our first phase. I know there was a concern to have it installed earlier rather than later, but it will be completed with our first phase. So upon completion of that first home, that park will be completed as well. It is a passive park, so there's just landscaping and a walkway and a bench, but it is fully irrigated, and it will be maintained by the homeowners association. The median and the parkways, I believe that are in question. Everything has been turned over to the HOA. We no longer own any of those common area facilities, but we will work with the HOA to go ahead and spruce up the landscaping. We have a round median. We have a... There's a round landscape median here that some of the plant material is suffering, and this parkway area here. So as part of our marketing effort, we will spruce up the landscaping in those areas. But again, we don't own the property, so I have to get permission from them.
This is a landscaping part of my package here that... I think everybody got it?
Yes. And the park is not completed, so that's the only portion of the community that has not been turned over yet.
Well, it shows, you know, landscaping alongside the side of the roads and new sidewalks to be put in and everything else. Have you agreed to do that? Or who's responsible with this chart, my package?
All of the sidewalks are currently in. There are some drive approaches that need to be put in, some sidewalk that needs to be replaced that we put in so there was public path of travel. That's in front of lots that need to be developed. We need to put the drive approaches in, and we're going to complete all of that work.
I'm confused over the origination of this chart. Did everybody get this in your pack?
That came from us.
So this shows that sidewalks, driveway, improved approaches, and landscaping to be done or has been done?
The colored areas are to be done.
Okay. That's what I wanted confirmation. Thank you.
Jim?
And I just want to check with that park. Is that part of the development agreement? You're contractually required to build that park when you build the first house? Is that what the situation is?
It is part of our site plan. It's part of our site plan approval and our landscape package.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for Crystal? Thank you, Crystal.
Okay. I would like just to make one more point. There was an item of concern that was brought to our attention, and that is some of the plotting and side elevations. And I just wanted to throw out there that on the corners here... So we've got three prominent corners, Lot 55, 56, and 25, that have exposed sides to the street. And we're going to plot on those three corners the plan that has a lot of side articulation, which is our Plan 6, which is actually...
I think Plan 6 is actually Plan 5.
Yeah, Plan 6 or Plan 7.
Plan 7.
It was Plan 7.
I go... No, no, no. Go to Plan 7.
Yeah, it's the side entry house. So it's actually, I believe it's that colored elevation there.
Would you grab it for her, please, James? I don't think we can see it on camera. People at home might want to see it.
So you can see in this elevation, the entry to the house is on the side. So there's... It provides for a lot of movement. And this is the side that is exposed on all of those corner conditions. So this would be the plan that would be plotted on those corners.
Thank you.
Was there shutters on that side that you just showed us? There's no shutters on those windows, correct?
Not on that side. There wasn't any opportunity to put shutters on those sides. But every... We have shutters on windows where there's opportunities to do it. And that's one of the additions that's been made.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right. This time, we'll open the public hearing, and I think we have some cards. If you'd like to speak and haven't yet filled out a card, the cards are at the back of the room. Just please fill them out and provide them to our recording secretary. The first speaker is Joseph Valenta, followed by Rachel Strulia.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Valenta. I'm here with my wife, Biddy. We are against the proposed home plans to be placed under 17 vacant lots in County Talega. The architectural revised design are still not in harmony with the existing homes. Placing these homes in the center of a development will distract from the uniqueness of the existing homes. This will devalue the neighborhood. We urge the Planning Commission not to approve the proposed plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Strulia? Or is it... I can't remember if you pronounced the G or not. Okay.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I know you've heard from me before. My name is Rachel Strulia. I'm the property owner at 19 Via Franca in the Carillon Development. My husband and I have reviewed the March 3rd plans, and we have a few additional changes that we would like to bring to your attention for consideration to increase the compatibility of the proposed homes with the existing homes. This supplements two previous letters we've written on November 12th, 2013, and March 26th, 2014. And I want to state one last thing, which is it is our desire for the applicant to keep the existing exteriors of the homes and only make interior modifications to their floor plans. In the Design Review Subcommittee meeting of November 2013, Ms. Darden mentioned that the Planning Commission would be looking at five-sided design because we are in a hillside community, and we don't just see one side of the home. And we feel that Standard Pacific has not adequately addressed the proposed rear elevations. In fact, tonight, I don't see any schematics of the rear elevations, and we have not to date really seen any schematics except in the plans. And I would really like... I'm very concerned about this issue. So I want to draw your attention to my Slide 1, which is the proposed home. And if you are wondering where this came from, this is the Montserrat at Blackstone Development on the left-hand side. And this is what the rear elevation of those existing homes in Brea looks like. And it was very much the model for what was going to come down here originally. The home on the right is actually my home, and so I want to draw to your attention and bring some recommendations before you that in order to soften the very stark and harsh exterior of the rear elevation, we'd like to see perhaps a 6- to 12-inch extension of wood beaming onto the balcony. If you look at the proposed elevation, you can see that at the corner there's a stucco support beam that could be made wood to soften the exterior again. Adding shutters to the rear elevations would be helpful in terms of making this consistent with the existing Carillon homes. And lastly, on the rear elevations, there are four homes that face Avenida Talega, which is a scenic corridor in the specific plan. So it's not just me as a homeowner at 19 Via Franca. Everybody in Talega who passes through the community will see these rear elevations. Regarding the side elevations, at November's design... Sorry, March Design Review Subcommittee meeting, it was recommended that the applicant add detailing to the side elevations as was mentioned in the presentation. Only shutters were added to the left-side elevations. Chimneys, courtyards, pop-outs, as shown in my Slide 2? Maybe I could... Yeah. Do a lot, in addition to Juliet's balconies, to break up the side elevations. And, you know, many new home developments are doing these even with self-fenting chimneys. So we would like the applicant and the Planning Commission to consider adding some wood pop-outs as shown to Lots 55, 56, 43, and 25 in particular because those are the corner lots. I'd just like to summarize, if I have a moment, to say there are a couple of things on the front elevation that are not still there. Plan 5 does not have any balcony on the front. And Plan 4 Spanish has an arched window, which is not consistent at all with the community. This is the slide showing 19 Via Franca, and you can see as the applicant has acknowledged that it's, you know, not the best of shape. We want prospective homeowners to have the best opportunity of our... You know, to see in our neighborhood in the best light. So any attention to that park and to this median would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing no one step forward, I'll close the public hearing. And ask, Amber, would you mind coming up and... Would you address the question, the issues that Ms. Strulia had about the rear elevation?
Yes. On the rear elevation, originally, at the Designer Review Subcommittee meeting, it was made clear that, yes, we're looking at five-sided architecture, but there was not a concern of having veneer on the backside of that elevation. And that when we went back at the March Planning Commission meeting... Or I'm sorry, Planning Commission, Designer Subcommittee meeting, the rear elevations were specifically discussed there as well
We don't have rear elevation visual.
You do in the packets on the left-hand side.
Yeah, I saw that, but that's, but she said that she didn't, she didn't see that before.
They're included in the, in the information that she would oversee.
Right.
I wanted to see a schematic of what rear is really going to look like, so I'm going to be looking right at it.
Her concern was there's not a colored elevation.
I see, all right. I, I saw the rear elevations, but she was, she obviously said had not seen those or...
I think, I think she hadn't seen a color, dimensional elevation, yes.
And I will point out that, that the rear, the way they're designed is very different. The balconies that they have are cantilevered, so you have a shorter balcony that comes off. The new product line actually has rooms, and so the balcony sits on top of an open room. So you have an open balcony off the back, which encloses that as well as above. So there, there's decks out there, they're just not cantilevered in the same way.
And Amber, I remember at the earlier DRSC meeting, which is the one I attended, I was not able to attend the one in March because we were at Planner's Institute, but I remember at, at that meeting that Ms. Strulia had those pictures from Brea. I don't remember what the applicant's comment about that was. Are those accurate as far as what those rear elevations would look like or is there some variation?
I'd have to defer to her.
Crystal, would you mind coming forward and answering that for us?
I also wanted to state, Ms. Ward had a question about shutters on that side. There actually is in the plans. Crystal did not remember that there were shutters on those side elevations, but there are.
The side elevations on the ones that are on the corners?
On the corners, all corners.
Or in one of the front windows.
Wait, on the front window and not the side?
The front area of the side?
The front area of the side.
Okay, where the door is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So to address the picture issue, the picture that was taken is of one of our plans. It is in our current Blackstone community up in Brea. It's our Plan Three, which would be this Plan Six. So it's, it, that elevation only occurs on one of the plans. The other two plans, the Plan Four and the Plan Five, do have different articulation in the rears. So I think it's important to consider that that picture only represents one plan. So, and, and, and we, there were no additional comments in regards to the rear elevations at any of the other Design Review Subcommittee meetings.
Okay, thank you, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Michael?
Are we in discussion now?
Yes, we are. I closed the public hearing.
I know that we've always tried to achieve five-sided architecture and I, my recollection is the conversation at Design Review was that because of the patios and because of the lower outdoor rooms and the way that they, they had the upper cantilevering, that there was a lot of movement, much more so than what you typically find on a, a product that has just a sheer two-wall. So given the fact that, and unfortunately, the, the picture that Ms. Strulia showed doesn't have the benefit of landscaping, but I think my, my interpretation is that that has a lot of movement and, and probably will suffice once you get the landscaping involved. And I just wanted to say, I think that given the, the amount of outreach that the applicant has done for the community with two different community meetings and changing the plans three times with some pretty significant changes, the chimneys were a huge change that really, I think, helped to, to meld the, the, the new product into the, the old. I think the, the additional shutters that are on the side of the several products, though it's not a huge enhancement, it really, it goes a long way. And so I'm, I'm supportive of that. I, you know, in a perfect world, maybe they could all look exactly like the existing product, but I think they've done a good job of integrating what they're proposing. I noticed in Ms. Strulia's letter, I'm not sure which window you were referring to, but there, I noticed in your neighborhood, there were seven homes that did have arched windows. They're not exactly the same arch as the one that you might be referring to, but there, there were seven that I counted that do have arched windows. So I'm, I'm supportive of this. I think, I think the lesson was learned a few months ago when the first application came through in Talega and that the, the applicant did not do the outreach to the community. And I think this has been a really good, healthy outreach, so I'm, I'm supportive.
I would, I would agree, Michael. You know, I think since I was not at the second Design Review, it was really interesting for me to see the degree of change that had occurred from that first set of plans that we saw and, and I thought it was significant. You know, for me, the, the balconies at the front on the, on the Monterey plans were a really important issue and the changes in the roof and the, and the chimneys. But I think, you know, some of the smaller details, the, you know, window framing and the, and the shutters also make a big difference. So I think, I think the applicant's come quite a long way on this one. Wayne, I'm sorry.
I, I appreciate your comments from Design Review because you guys have spent a lot of time with the various design elements. And so I'm going to be, I'm going to be supportive of your comments about that. And I really, by the way, appreciate Design Review and all the work that you do there because that's really a very detailed analysis of, of the designs for many different projects. So, so thank you.
I would agree with that. I think they've made enough changes that it's, it's pretty compatible with the existing. I would be, I would support the project with the condition that the, the stucco finish on their Spanish elevation, that model be the same, matches the existing Spanish.
That's a good point. Don?
I just want to make the, yeah, the comment to, to Design Review. You've made the, you've gone through several iterations here. I know that some of the neighbors are not quite happy yet. It's always unfortunate in the fine print when you buy one of these homes that the contractor has the right to change the plans in the future type thing. And so they could have done nothing and been within certain, certain rights. So I think they've come a long way through the public outreach in Design Review. And so I think they've made a pretty, I think, a pretty substantial change. And I'm, when I looked at the plans as far as those California patios that cover it outdoor living areas, which are, I think, a significant addition to the, to the models compared to what was built before. So I'll, I'll support it and appreciate the, the public interaction. I appreciate your detailed inputs also on the efforts you went for your, into your letter and your presentation.
And I just wanted to echo the comments the other commissioners made thanking the developer in making these kinds of changes. But I, I also very much appreciate what Ms. Strulia did and, and her, her neighbors as well. I know you're probably not getting everything that you want, but you've instigated a lot of changes. It's, it's going to be much better for your community. So I think you're to be commended for, you know, not just the energy you put into making the changes, but also the clarity of the communication about the DRSC and the Planning Commission. It was actually a big help, so thank you.
I actually was willing to say, Rachel, that you did such a good job that you might be a good candidate for Design Review. But I'll tell you, it doesn't pay well.
Do we have a motion?
I will move that we adopt Resolution PC 14-016, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving amendment to site plan permit 02-093, a request to consider revised architecture and floor plans for 17 vacant lots in tract 16336, also known as Carolan. With the additional condition of approval that the stucco treatment on the Spanish plan, what number was that, do you remember?
I think it's all the Spanish plans.
All the Spanish plans, excuse me. Match the existing, the stucco on the existing Spanish plans.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, passes 6-0. I, I did also want to say, Amber, you did a great job of helping to coordinate the efforts of the applicant and of the public and of, you know, coming to a resolution that, you know, really, I think, pleased most of the community and I think mostly pleased Ms. Strulia. And, and I think the end result would be positive for everybody, so thank you for doing such a great job.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay. And that will bring us to our last item, which is 8F, which is, while Amber's taking this down, it'll give me time to read this very lengthy title. Conditional use permit 14-084 and minor exception permit 14-085. Coastal duplex conditional use permit 14-086, minor exception permit 14-087. Resmac, res, oh, I'm sorry. Resmac, duplex conditional use permit 14-088 and minor exception permit 14-089. Kidd duplex conditional use permit 14-090 and minor exception permit 14-091. Beller's duplex conditional use permit 14-092 and minor exception permit 14-093. Sclamentum duplex.
And I apologize for that very lengthy title, but it's much shorter than doing five presentations.
And I'm sorry, I missed that. Could you repeat it?
Okay, so we lovingly refer to this as the South El Camino Real duplexes, just because we don't want to repeat what poor Julia just did. So, Jim, if you could hit the button, please. So the location of these duplexes is along South El Camino Real and adjacent to Avenida San Luis Rey. And the rear side of the development is along Caide Comercio. These are five separate projects, as you can tell in, in the title. Each property owner owns two of the lots and would like to build a duplex on each lot for a total of 10 duplexes or 20 units. Each of the property owners agreed to hire one architect, Michael Luna, and so he is the architect that's here tonight to help answer any questions. Next slide, please. So the project is located in what the general plan identifies as the surf zone. This is a new designation in the general plan. And basically what it does is it, it embraces the city's surf culture in the south part of town from basically the Five Freeway to the end of the city, city limits. There are several other developments that are existing in this part of town that are surf-esque in architectural style and...
Surf-esque, that's a new one.
Yes, and was continued through.
Must be missing Michael Luna.
So the applicant is proposing Polynesian Hawaiian architecture. Next. So it, the development is located in the MU 5, or 5.1 zoning district. This is a horizontal mixed-use, not a vertical mixed-use. And what that means is you have a block of commercial and then a block of residential and a block of commercial and so on and so forth. The goal of it is to do at least 20,000 square feet of one type of use, whether it be commercial or residential. With all of the lots put together, you have 40,000 square feet, so the development meets that goal. But as part of the MU 5.1, any residential unit does require a conditional use permit, which is why the applicant is here today. In addition, being on El Camino Real and adjacent to the Five Freeway, it's a little loud out there, and so the applicant is requesting an increase in wall height from 42 inches, which is permitted by the zoning ordinance, up to five feet. So that's what the minor exception permit is for. The corner lots, you can stay there, it's fine. Corner lots have an increased side yard setback of 10 feet on the side, but with the lots being pretty narrow already, they're only 40 feet wide, the applicant is also requesting a minor exception permit on that corner lot to reduce the side yard setbacks up to 20%, which is permitted by the zoning ordinance with the approval of the minor exception permit. They would also like to carry the five-foot wall height down a majority of that side to match the fronts for privacy. The master bedroom for that plan is located along that elevation as well. So here we have a site plan. This is showing all 10 of the proposed lots and how they would lay out. They are through lots, so the front along El Camino Real, which reads mainly as the front, has a 10-foot setback. There are no curb cuts along El Camino Real, preserving all the parking area in that area and makes it much safer of a development as far as people entering and exiting properties. All the garages are along Caide Comercio on the backside. And because of how narrow the lots are, they do qualify for tandem parking on all of these, so a majority of them do have tandem parking associated with them. Each unit has five-foot side yard setbacks. There are two separate floor plans that are proposed with this, and one of them has a deeper side yard entryway on there. And those are the ones where you're going to see the steps on the side, side elevations. This is the landscape plan that shows all the palm trees that are along El Camino Real because that is our palm tree corridor. And then the street trees along Caide Comercio. As part of the minor exception permit, I want to bring your attention to the corner lot. There is landscaping all the way around there and staff felt that that was very important to help soften that since it is on a corner to, to have landscaping all the way around. Along El Camino Real, we have a much wider public right-of-way, a much wider sidewalk. And so there are, I don't want to say the pockets of landscaping because they're a little bit more significant than, than a pocket, but it does go landscaping, wall, landscaping, wall to help break up, so you don't have just walls along El Camino Real as well. That was very important to staff also. Next. So this is just zoomed in a little bit more on each one of the plans. It's kind of hard when you look at all 10 of them. So along El Camino Real, you see the front entrance ways that have decorative landscaping and patios off the front. And then the back, we have enhanced scored concrete and landscaping. Next. So in regards to the architecture, again, this is in the, the surf zone. The goal of the surf zone is to celebrate the city's surf history and surf culture. And one of the policies is surf culture design. Now, unfortunately, we don't have general design guidelines that define what surf culture design was, so the applicant, staff, and Designer Subcommittee were giving our best effort to try to make sure that it, it felt like a surf architecture. Some of the details reminiscent of some of the developments that were approved previously, and we felt that this met the goal and the policy of that. So this is a partial street scene, and I wanted to show that there's another street scene with the full 10 units here. And then I also wanted to point out that the color boards are up here. Whenever you copy, do electronics, all the colors change. So I thought it was very important to actually have the color chips up here, especially when we're dealing with much brighter colors than we're used to seeing. So that way that they're up there. So the way that the plans are laid out is, is there's two floor plans. And basically, they're alternated and flip-flopped in the same type of way that a, a tract home development would be to help give it more variation. There's a lot of architectural details on the front where we have the plantation shutters. We have large open patios on the top. And each one of these actually has a roof deck associated with it as well. Now, there's a two-story height maximum in this area, and I know in some of these elevation, it looks like there's three stories, but that's because there is a grade change difference between Del Comercio and El Camino Real, so that kind of bumps it up a little bit. Next. So this is the first elevation, where you see the open shutters on the top and then the veneered wall along El Camino Real, the two-car garage on the back, and then the one-car garage on the side. Next. The side elevation shows the elevation change from Comercio, which would be on the right-hand side looking at it, versus El Camino Real. Now that came into play. There is five-sided architecture on, on these elevations with architectural details all the way around. Next. And this is the second elevation. Has a large patio or balcony, I should say, on the top, plantation shutters as well and the stone veneer and the roof detail too. We felt that that added a lot to that architectural style. Side elevation. Next. And then I wanted to point out particularly the corner lot and what that would look like. So we have the plantation shutters, the decorative veneer there as well. On the left-hand side where you see the building, that's additional landscaped area. And then on the right-hand side where you go to Comercio, that is a reduced wall height on that corner. And then this is just a close-up of the additional landscaping on that corner lot to help soften that. Next. And that concludes staff's presentation. And staff's available to answer any questions.
Kathy?
I just have a quick question on the landscaping for that corner lot. On page 10 of your conditions, it says residential corner lots shall include a minimum of two trees along the side yard parkway. Yet the design only shows, I think, one tree with a lot of little landscaping. So I just wanted to point that out. It's not the same.
Thank you. I will, what, what condition was that?
Page 10. I just have it. Page 10, actually, it's number E.
Oh, yes, I see that.
You see it under landscape plans?
Yes. And I know that the applicant, and thank you for catching that, we will change...
Page ten, actually, it's number E.
Oh, yes, I see that.
You see it under landscape plan?
Yes, and I know that the applicant, and thank you for catching that, we will change the landscaping plan to reflect that, and the applicant has read the conditions and is supportive of all of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amber, or shall we ask, uh, the applicant and, or the applicant's representative to step forward?
Great presentri- presentation, Amber. Thank you, very thorough. It's like, what do I have left to say? She covered it.
I'm sure you'll come up with something.
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, city, uh, city staff, Michael Luna, architect and owner's representative. I'm here tonight with, uh, the, uh, the various owner's representatives as well, uh, they're here in the office, uh, excuse me, here in the, uh, hearing to answer any questions you may have as well. Uh, but indeed, welcome to our surf zone, uh, as it works to get defined and so forth, and so being put in the position of, uh, attempting to, to design something in the surf zone now for, on a few different occasions, uh, I continually get drawn back to the beach and the surfing heritage, indeed, I have to ask myself, then where did surfing get started? And it got started in Hawaii. And so henceforth, it makes a lot of sense to me, particularly when I've talked to so many surfers in town, uh, about if you weren't surfing here, where would you rather be surfing? And they would most likely say Hawaii. So if they can't be there, let's bring a little bit of, of the Hawaiiana, I think, to them in the surf zone, um, and, and I think that's what we tried to do. Uh, what we've done is a bit of a, uh, what I would call a more of a contemporary interpretation of Polynesian-style architecture, and I think it's come off. I, uh, one of the things we really enjoyed was playing with color on these, you don't see it on these exhibits, but you definitely see it here, and indeed, through our conversations and workings with the, um, uh, the Design Review Subcommittee, they really embrace, embraced color as part of this, and I think color is exciting, it's fun, it adds interest, uh, and it definitely gets us away from, uh, the white stucco and the red tile roofs, uh, and the beiges and so forth, that although we're, we're carrying in some of the beiges, we think it's, they're warm, and I think they make sense with our color palette. Indeed, uh, I try to make it a practice to not ask for a variance or a minor exception permit, um, but in this particular case, the landscape walls in the front that, that we're showing, uh, serve a very valuable, uh, purpose. We, unfortunately, are right across the street from a major freeway, and the noise that generates, uh, that is generated from that freeway, we've done all we can to, uh, place, uh, an obstruction, a solid obstruction in that wall of sound, and we think that, uh, you know, rather than requesting a six-feet-high wall, we're requesting a five-foot-high wall. We think that's a definitely more human scale, and that's measured from the sidewalk. So because of the grade difference between the, uh, the way the site slopes a bit, uh, from the back street to El Camino Real, um, some of the landscape walls are only four feet and three-and-a-half feet from the inside behind the wall, but we, we thought that five hopefully would be a comfortable dimension, uh, for the streetscape. Uh, with regards to the, the minor exception permit on the corner property, indeed, uh, it's just a very narrow ten-foot, excuse me, forty-foot-wide lot, and with a ten-foot setback, it just leaves very, very little, so we've, we've asked for a twenty percent reduction on that. Um, but, uh, in, in essence, in, in actuality, I think this will be a very welcome investment. The owners are willing to invest in this community, it's an area, and matter of fact, this, this site is really on my top-five list of properties in that area that I think are worthy of some investment, and thank goodness we have some owners who are willing to invest. What would really be a quality project, uh, I think these duplexes, uh, will be, uh, a great improvement, uh, for this area, and we hope that you like what we've done, as we indeed attempt to define what it, what the surf zone is. And so, uh, I'm here to answer any questions, and the owner's representatives available to answer questions as well.
Yeah, what island of Hawaii did the blue palette come from?
Uh, you're, you're wondering where the blue palette came from?
The blue-colored.
I believe you said what, what island of Hawaii? Came from the water, don't it?
The waters around Hawaii?
Never heard of Alice Presley, Blue Hawaii?
That definitely sticks out.
I thought you almost pressed it.
You know, I, I think you, I think you can find that it really on very, on several of the islands, I, I think, uh, I think they've gotten very playful with color there as well, and I think we tried to carry that through.
I actually found a Polynesian-designed house in South Carolina that was that color, exact color, so it surprised me.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Luna?
I have one. Michael, uh, other than the, the wall of five feet in front of him, what else was done to mitigate the freeway noise and traffic?
Um, we're actually, um, uh, in the process of engaging a sound consultant, a noise consultant, they'll go out and measure the noise levels there, and that will be calculated against what the noise levels must be inside the units. And so we will have construction, first of all, we start with our windows, uh, there's a, most likely, the windows along El Camino Real will be triple-glazed rather than dual-glazed, makes a huge difference in noise. Uh, the interior insulation on the interior walls might be mounted on, um, sound isolation, uh, fur-out strips, uh, that they put on the inside part of the wall, sometimes you find them on ceilings to stop noise from, uh, upper to lower units, um, uh, and we're going to investigate, depending on the findings of the analysis, uh, we may end up with those on the exterior walls facing El Camino Real. So it's going to be scientifically cal- calculated to make sure that, uh, there's a comfort, a comfortable quietness to the in- inside of the units.
So there's no goal of, I looked up, uh, STC rating for windows, there was no goal of what you want to reach, you're just waiting to see what the sound is?
Uh, California law dictates a minimum of fifty-five dB, uh, no additional noise beyond fifty-five dB is permissible within an interior living unit. And so part of the scientific calculations that's done by the acoustic consultant will assess that, uh, that value to be, to make sure that that is obtained on the interior of the units.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one other note, I considered bringing lays for everybody, but I, I, uh, I thought it might perhaps is not appropriate. Maybe on the next, uh, surf zone project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. All right, um, let's open up the public hearing, and anyone who wishes to speak to this matter should come forward now, and see no one come forward, and no cards, I'll close the public hearing and invite discussion. Bart?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think Michael's done a wonderful job, um, sound can be handled, the, the tough one is exterior living space sound. And I want to go on record, and this is just so we don't set a precedence on five-foot walls along property lines in other locations, that this is specifically to create a quieter exterior living spot, not inside the unit, but to make that, uh, front deck, or that front, um, yard usable. I think he's addressed it well. Uh, I don't know how we could do it, but I want to make sure if, when you do your sound study, that if they're recommending things be higher, uh, that it come back for review. I don't want to see just glass put on top of a five-foot wall, I'm going to consider that a wall higher than five feet, or that they try to enclose these great upstairs balconies. Um, but great job, and, um, on projects that don't have the noise of both El Camino and the freeway, I don't think, well, this is setting a precedence for walls on, uh, those situations for the exception. And that's my biggest concern, and I think, uh, great job.
It's important to call that out, Bart, I think that's a good, good point to get on the record. Jim?
Yeah, and in fact, that was, that was one of the first things I was going to bring up, my, my biggest concern in terms of a negative with this project is that we would get those, you know, five-foot or even higher walls on El Camino Real, and we're trying to make more walkable space, and, and there'd be justification for it, so I, I just want to reiterate that, that's, you know, I, I, that's my only big fear about, about this, is that it would set a precedent. I appreciate the, the, how the walls are broken up, um, I did worry about a five-foot-high wall, and wondered how much that would help internally, but Bart, you make a good point that externally in the yard, that will make, make a difference. Um, I, uh, I can support the conditional, the, uh, use permit as well, and the, um, the setbacks for that one unit. Uh, I will say that all the other things that I've seen that Michael has done, has been Spanish colonial revival, so as soon as you had a color palette to work with, man, you went crazy, so. But it's, but I was really excited to see the project as a whole, I think it's, like Bart, I think it's really wonderful, um, working in the G-PAC, we tried to define this area as a place you could kind of swing out a little bit, do something different than this Spanish colonial revival, and, and this is, as a first project down there, to kind of make a statement and say, this is the surf zone, this is, even though we don't have standards for it yet, this is what it can look like, here's a great vision for it, I think it's really wonderful, it can be something that could just, you know, do a lot to ignite that, that area to start to become something that, um, that we've envisioned in the, in the general plan, so really, you know, wonderfully done, and, you know, I'm, I'm very excited about the project. I would also say, although I'm, I'm completely behind the project, the, the wall around the side on, um, San Luis?
San Luis Rey.
Uh, San Luis Rey. Um, I, I'm, I'm not sure there's as much of a need for five-foot-high there as it is in the other areas, um, I wouldn't vote against the project because of that, but if there's, you know, general consensus that, uh, the lower wall would make more sense on San Luis Rey, I would support that as well.
Don?
Yeah, I'd, uh, appreciate, uh, your efforts there, I'm going, running wild a little bit down there outside the Spanish colonial revival district. I'm really heartened because of parts of the staff report where they've had seventy-two cases of code enforcement over the last few years, uh, hundred-and-twenty complaints, uh, my personal recollection down in that area, that, that this is the type of a start down there that's really going to help out, uh, one down and four more to go, so keep working on it, Michael, you don't take your pack off yet, so. I'm going to be supportive of it, and I'll support the, uh, the wall noise along San Luis Rey, because I'm, I'm down there a lot also, and there's some, there's some noise going up the street, and it's not going to attenuate, and the noise curves are, are there in the staff report from, from the, from our EIR, from the general plan, so I think it's going to be a great project to, to go forward, and it is a start of, uh, of something, I think, in the surf zone's going to be really welcomed, so, uh, go forward.
Uh, what were, what was the discussion in Design Review with regard to the, uh, blue color?
I was going to make a comment that, um, we did totally embrace the color, but as was pointed out by Amber, the color on the screen is not the color you'll be getting, it's the, the color that's, uh, on the storyboards that have been provided, so I think the, the intensity is, is much less on those, and those are more accurate colors.
Okay.
And also, um, when, one of the things that we discussed is the, um, the first, uh, color palette that Michael presented, um, had this blue, which we did think was lovely, but the other colors were, um, uh, a little too soft, so the, in his next group, uh, to complement it, we felt, it made the blue stand out a little too much, um, and so he brought the, uh, the green with, uh, the next presentation, which we thought was a, a really nice blending, gave it a lively feel, but, you know, not too over the top.
Good, good. Um, this particular area has been a real bugaboo for so long, hasn't it? Um, with regard to, um, the code enforcement and the sheriff's activities down there, um, and it's been a really blight on, on the area, and, uh, it's really nice to see that, uh, there's, there's a real proactive type of issue here of trying to really clean up that, that area, that's, that's really great, I, I really appreciate that. And I'm so thankful that the owners hired one architect, one of our premier architects in, in San Clemente, if not in Southern California, um, I'm really very pleased about that, to say the least, uh, so that's, that's great, I'm, I'm very pleased about that. I am, I am supportive of the project, um, I'm glad to see that, uh, on the garage side there's eighteen feet, so they can park in the driveway, because I know tandem parking, uh, sometimes it doesn't work out very well, um, and, um, and the, and the street behind there is, is really impactful with regard to parking. I'm glad to see that there are no curb cuts on South El Camino Real, that's, that's, uh, that's a real plus, uh, to say the least, um, and so, um, and I'm very, I'm very supportive of the project, and I'm glad to see that the blue has been toned down, and thank you, Design Review, once again.
I will be supportive of the project. I looked up the, uh, in our new general plan, the policy for this corridor is that we require sites developed exclusively for residential use that are designed to convey a high level of quality in accordance with the urban design element and design guidelines. I think this project does do that, I think the designs are, are well, are really well-thought-out. I appreciate the colors, I think it's going to add, uh, vibrancy to that area. One of the other conditions of this corridor is that we adequately mitigate the noise and the traffic. So my big concern with that is that, um, they go over and above for quality of life to, to really mitigate that noise, and really make these as lovely as they can be, and to be in these, uh, residences, and, um, I would support what Bart said, that if there's any mitigation that has to come later because the noise isn't adequately addressed, then it should come back to us.
Agreed.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, Michael, were you waiting to make a motion?
Oh, go ahead. No, I'd just like to, uh, point out also, in our, uh, our mobility and complete streets effort for that area, uh, is to do traffic calming, uh, squeeze down the lanes, I think, uh, and over on the freeway side, put bike paths, and so I think there's going to be plantings and some sound attenuation can be addressed if we ever get that project going. I mean, the old, the recent city plan had street issues addressed, and I'm kind of a center median, but what we have planned for down there would really complement projects like this, if more of them come along, that would probably, would lead the city to take a look at the priorities in that area down there, because that would certainly help the noise mitigation, uh, if we do the traffic calming planning that we did in that part of the general plan.
Did you have a comment, or were you waiting to make a motion? Because I had a comment before the, before.
Okay, well, I wanted to, um, I wanted to make some comments, I, Michael, you did a great job, um, you know, it's been brought up that this area's been a continual, um, blighted area, and this is a huge step, huge step in, in improving the area, and I'm not sure if you can go back to the slide that shows the rear elevations, but I know we focused on the front elevations, but as far as a neighborhood is concerned, um, I think it showed one where it showed the landscape in the, the rear, the, uh, maybe the plot plan, um, that, yeah, that, no, yeah, that's good. If you look at that alley scape, what a difference that's going to make to that blighted, existing alley with landscape and enhanced textures to the, the pavement and all, um, I think we can't underestimate the, the value of those rear elevations as well, so I think it's a great project. I have no problem with either the minor exception permits for the, the wall height, and I think that was a good point, Bart, it, it gives us a strong footing in not making this a, um, uh, an issue for other projects, uh, this is a, a unique situation, and I, I have no problem with the, the reduced side yard setback as well. But, um, this is such an important project for the area, and, and it's great that we've got people who are investing in these properties, and that it's just going to be a turnaround, so I, I'm really pleased, um, I'm happy to make the motion when, when we're ready.
You know, I, I echo, uh, everything the other commissioners have said, I, I think, um, you know, I'm so grateful that the, that the owners are making this investment in this area, because certainly, as we've all said, it's, it makes a big difference on El Camino Real, but, um, as somebody who lives in an area of southwest that's lovingly called Top Tunis Estates, um, the, what's on the Freddage Street can make a big difference to the houses that are back behind it, so I think the houses that are up the hill, um, will also benefit from having this as the entrance way to, to their homes, so I think that'll, that'll make a big difference. Uh, and, you know, I was really curious before we got the packet, uh, the first time for Design Review, to see, you know, what, what was this going to be, because as, you know, we all recognized this was going to define, um, the surf zone, and I really couldn't fathom what that was going to be, um, and I didn't know what surf-esque meant, but, um, I, I'm really pleased to see, um, this, I think this is a, as a, as a really neat feel to that, um, that area of town, and I think just the, the color itself gives a feeling of vitality, that an area that needs, um, some lifting up. some lifting up can really benefit from. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the, of the project.
Okay. With that, I'll take a stab at.
Do we have five motions?
We've got five motions to make. I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number PC 14-017, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit 14084 and minor exception permit 14085 coastal duplexes for the two duplexes located in the mixed-use zoning district at 2721 and 2723 South El Camino Real.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes 7-0.
So.
Should I keep going or does everybody want to do one? Okay, everybody take.
I, I will move that we adopt Resolution Number PC 14-018, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit 14086 and minor exception permit 14-087. Resmick the duplexes, I beg your pardon, for two duplexes located in the mixed-use zoning district at 2725 and 2727 South El Camino Real.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes 7-0. Commissioner Ward?
I move that we approve Resolution Number PC 14-019, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit 14-088 and minor exception permit 14-089, Cade duplexes for two duplexes located in the mixed-use zoning district at 2729 and 2731 South El Camino Real.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes 7-0. Commissioner Erickson?
Okay. Resolution Number PC 14-019?
Nope.
That's right. Yep. 020. I'm getting it here.
And you've had so much more experience than she has.
I know. What can I say?
Thank you for pointing that out.
Commissioner Ward, will you put him under training, please?
You might.
Okay. Yes. Number five or four?
Four.
Four is not.
It's on the left.
All right. All right. It's on the left-hand side. Resolution Number PC 14-020, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit 14-090 and minor exception permit 14-091, elders duplexes for two duplexes located in the mixed-use zoning district at 2733 and 2735 South El Camino Real. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. Which one of you is next?
I've got a couple. I'm very excited. I move we approve Resolution PC 14021, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit 14092 and minor exception permit 14093. San Clemente duplexes for two duplexes located in mixed-use zoning district at 2737 and 2739 South El Camino Real. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes 7-0. Congratulations. And, Michael, do you have any idea when we'll see construction begin on these?
We'd like to blow demo tomorrow. We'd like, we'd like you to do that, too. Construction documents are almost done. And, thank you so much for your support tonight and your kind compliments.
Thank you.
We're moving quickly.
Now go out and get in the hallway and shirt on, Dave.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. So that moves us to reports of commissioners and staff. Jim, you look like you have something to say.
The average time it takes to read the resolutions for 25 seconds with Commissioner Ward being the winner at 23 and Wayne losing with a minute and a half.
They're just gaining up with these guys.
All right. Anything from Coastal?
I met a couple weeks ago, and we had extensive answers to the, to the committee on the Poche Beach Action Plan, specifically about, one of the plans we just approved tonight, but we talked about, about the sewer master plan and diversion and et cetera, and how the, the engineering would go about that and all the permits required and what's going to go on. And then another update, which you've seen a lot in the paper, maybe today and recently, about finally a breakthrough on the Water Act, which would finally break the logjam and steps to move forward for sand on our beach, which there was even an article in the Register today quoting Tom Bonnigut, the Assistant City Engineer, that if things go according to plan and the funding falls and the Senate approves the bill that the House passed today, I think it was, or yesterday, then you could start seeing sand on the beach in 2017. So Coastal Advisory Committee and sand, all that stuff will start moving to the center stage here after 10 years of effort going forward.
Okay. And then I know that you're all, those of you who did not go to Planters Institute are dying to hear our reports. And we, we haven't forgotten them. And, you know, we'll be getting to them in a study session as soon as we can accommodate it. We've obviously had a busier-than-usual work schedule. And Commissioner Brown and I are going to be meeting with Jim and Sean to update them on some of the technologies because they wanted to get some information on that without waiting for the study session. So we'll be briefing them on that. And then we'll be bringing that to a study session soon near you.
Just quickly, on a more serious note, we.
Santa Claus was not serious, but that was serious.
We've had our kickoff meeting with the consultants to work on the LCP. And on next Friday, the 30th, we'll be meeting with the Coastal Commission staff to just talk about how we're going to go about, you know, completing the process. And Commissioner Brown, I think that you were elected the representative for our group, so if you'd like to attend that meeting, it's.
We'll be there Friday.
One o'clock on Friday, the 30th.
Okay. Meet up there, meet here, drive up.
Conference Room A, Conference Room A in Community Development.
Okay. Are you ready to make a motion?
I'm ready. Are we ready for a motion? Wayne, are we ready for a motion?
No, I'd like to continue for the next hour.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion then. We move that we adjourn to the adjourned regular Planning Commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on May 28, 2014, in the council chambers.
Second.
Oh. Congratulations. Bye.